Geniuses after this year of zooming.
All set.
Great, should we start?
We're ready.
All right, let me get the right. I'm going to try to do this all using Board Docs online. I'm not downloading the the agenda. So, okay. I would like to welcome everybody to the December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one, truth and tax here, truth and taxation hearing. Uh, for the, uh, proposed, uh, levy for the, the upcoming, um, academic year. Uh, can we please have a roll call?
Andy Duran.
Present.
Anne Hill, present, Mark Berry.
Yes, present.
Carrie, Carrie Steinbach.
Present.
Tim Pennett.
Present.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Present.
Lauren Hirsch.
Present.
All right, we have a quorum. We can begin. As always, we begin with public comment. If there's a, anybody in the audience, they can, uh, address the board regarding the proposed tax levy, or if we have anybody in the waiting room or any written comment that I'm not aware of.
No written for the public hearing.
Uh, and anybody in the, in the audience?
No, no one in the audience.
Okay, all right. So we're going to move on to the statement of purpose for the truth and taxation hearing. Uh, the purpose of this hearing is to allow for public comment of the proposed tax levy that will be voted on later this evening at the regular meeting. There will be another opportunity for public comment. After, uh, a presentation on the proposed tax levy. So now I move to Mr. Khan will do his presentation on the tax levy.
Okay, I just need to share my screen. Of course. There you go. And that is not the right screen to share. So much for technologically advanced. Yep.
The music. Love it.
Bring a whole new vibe.
Yeah. Is it like dance party break or like elevator music?
I'm out.
We're gonna make Jay's presentation way more.
I'll bring your guinea pigs and have them race across the floor.
It's not sharing. Here, we'll do this. Let me share. There it is. Okay.
We can see it on Zoom, Jay.
There we go. I got it. Okay, so this is the truth and taxation hearing. This is something that, uh, we are required to do if our levy is greater than a five percent increase over the prior year. This year, the levy increases, uh, like two percent, but we are, we in Lake Bluff do a truth and taxation hearing every year just to be as transparent as possible with our community. Uh, the reason that we are here today is to do the tax levy, which is important for our district because about ninety percent of our revenue is in the form of property taxes. Uh, just as a quick refresher, the levy is the amount that requesting, um, in taxes for, to be, um, from the government. The tax extension is the amount that will actually build the taxpayers. The levy request is what we're going to be talking about tonight. Uh, we'll use to calculate our levy, the EAV, which is all the value, the value of all the property in the district. That it's been assessed at one third of the market value and it's been equalized at across, um, townships for fairness. We'll also be using the CPI or consumer, the increase in the Consumer Price Index from December to December of the prior year. Uh, we calculate our tax levy using the property tax extension limitation law, which limits the increase in taxes to the CPI that I was just mentioning, or five percent, whichever is lower. And, uh, then we add new property. We tell, we also had taxed new property. So we tax existing property at that increase, and then we can add taxes for new property. Uh, as a reminder, the December twenty nineteen to December twenty twenty increase in CPI was one point four percent. Um, the increase from December twenty twenty through November of two thousand and twenty one is six point five percent. So for next year, we'll definitely be limited to that five percent increase. Uh, the, the values that we're using are as of January first, two thousand and twenty one, and they're based on the prior three years of sales data. We're right here in December of two thousand and twenty one, where we'll file the tax levy. And then come March or April, we'll get the final numbers from the county after they get, um, after they tally everything and give us the actual numbers. Uh, we will bill taxes and they'll be collected on June and September of two thousand and twenty two. And then we will, uh, use that money as revenue for the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year. So this will be not, um, this will be next fiscal year's revenue. Just a quick reminder on the calculation, we take the prior year's extension, uh, which is the total taxes extended in the prior year, um, for adding for all the individual property. We increase the total taxes by CPI to get the new, um, amount of taxes for this year, and then we reallocate based on any changes in property assessments. And then we add, um, taxes on new property. The December, December CPI was one point four percent. Last year it was two point three percent. So this year CPI is a little bit lower. Existing property, I'm expecting to decrease by about one point four percent. This is not a re, uh, quadrennial reassessment year. In those years, all property in Lake County is reassessed. In the off years, basically they look at sales data and they just increase it or decrease it. So property tends to move more, uh, less, there tends to be less large changes and property tends to increase or decrease together. However, this year there is a big adjustment. They do adjust different neighborhoods. Um, so the terraces are, are being adjusted down. And there's been some significant appeal activity. So, uh, that's why we're looking at a minus one point four percent decrease for our EAV, where I think the township EAV is going down by about point five percent. Your property is two and a half million. So that's property that was not taxed in the previous year. So we get to apply the tax rate to all that new property, and that's additional revenue for the district. And it's pretty much in line with historical. New property, I, I budget for two point five million in long-term projections on average every year. Some years it's a little bit more, but that's been the long-term average. So, um, what administration is recommending is a CPI increase of one point four percent on existing property. Uh, this will keep our fund balance in the desired range of thirty to fifty percent of operating expenditures. Uh, will allow us to grow revenue to keep pace with, um, last year's inflation. And then I'll preserve our PTO base, which basically means that because our next year's taxes are, are based on our prior year's taxes, by taking the full CPI, we preserve our ability to increase taxes in the future to meet our needs. The amount that we're asked, that we're asking for is, um, a total of sixteen million, five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars. That's broken down by, um, the one point four percent on existing property. Uh, so our taxes on existing property would go from sixteen point two million to sixteen point five million. Then we're adding, uh, sixty thousand dollars of taxes on new property. I'm increasing, or adding about fifty thousand dollars of cushion because I'm unsure of what the new property assessment is going to be. Uh, that gets us to sixteen, five, eighty, five hundred. And then the debt service extension, um, will be added in by the county after the levy is finalized. The, uh, the levy is what we're asking for only for operations, and then the county will automatically extend, add the debt service extension to the total extension in April when it's all calculated, which would give us a total tax increase of about two percent. Uh, or in an ask of eighteen million, eight, eighteen point eight million dollars. And that's what, uh, we'll be asking for approval for later this evening. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Jay, just to be, uh, clear, um, the district and the board does not set the levy, the ask for the tag for our debt service, correct? That's set by the, the county?
That is correct. That has been already approved by taxpayers. And it's kind of like your mortgage. It's, there's an amortization table and the county, because the bonds have already been approved through, um, approve board approval and or taxpayer referenda, the county automatically extends the amount necessary to pay the debt service annually. We don't need to ask again for the approval because we have already received it.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Jay, for Mr. Khan? Is there any public comment?
Not for this meeting.
Okay. So not hearing any further comment nor questions, I'm going to ask that the truth and taxation meeting be adjourned at six fifty-six PM. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Lauren Hirsch.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Yes.
Andy Duran.
Yes.
Mark Berry.
Yes.
Anne Hill, yes.
So we are temporarily adjourned. We will resume our regular meeting in about four minutes. So please stand by.
Thanks. Shall I let us know when you're ready? All set.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
We're ready to go. Everybody ready to go? All right. Uh, welcome to the Lake Bluff School District sixty-five Board of Education Regular Meeting for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty one. And could you please call the roll?
Andy Duran.
Present.
Anne Hill, present, Mark Berry.
Present.
Carrie Steinbach.
Present.
Tim Pennett.
Present.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Present.
Lauren Hirsch.
Present.
All right, so we have a quorum and we are ready to begin. So if you guys could all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, I would appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, we open every meeting with the opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience, they can please come to the podium. If there's anybody online, or if we have any written comment, I need to be notified of that.
Mark, we have two. Sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
We don't have anyone in person.
Okay.
Uh, we have two written public comments.
Okay.
The first one is from Lane Bennett. I would like the board to consider creating a COVID dashboard on the LB sixty-five web, website to post weekly positive cases in our schools instead of sending out emails to the entire school. This causes speculation and gossip. Emails should be sent to the family, parents, guardians only if the positive case is in that student's class. Lib, Libertyville School District seventy and Plainfield two oh two have implemented this dashboard. The second public comment is from Ashley Smith. Good evening. I have two comments to make. Is there any talk of bringing back classroom volunteers? Parents are coming into the school to volunteer at parties. Be mystery reader. I was just in the school past Friday for the first grade tra- traditions fair. Perhaps bringing back lunchroom volunteers would free up the time of certified staff so they can be in the other classrooms because I have heard finding substitutes right now is not easy. I also encourage the, all the administration and board members to step up and stub, substitute. The hired administration and elected boards created a COVID-obsessed environment for our students. And I feel as you continue to interrupt learning by masking children, focus on spit tests, and who has and hasn't gotten the vaccination, you all should spend time, some time in the shoes of our students so you can understand just how much COVID interrupts teaching and learning. The reason why our children are at school. I reached out to you all in the beginning of the year in hopes that parents would make, would be able to make the best choice for their child, for their child. The child, children, they know best masked, unmasked, vaccinated, unvaccinated. My hope for two thousand and twenty-two is that you all take into account all the students. Let parents make the best choice for their children. And that you can move forward with the teaching and learning for our students rather than spend wasted time on COVID. COVID isn't going anywhere. So how is this district going to move the focus past it? What are students going to be able to see their teacher smile at them when they get an answer right? When are parents going to be able to make the best choice for their child? When are, when are you, we going to let our kids be kids? Thank you for your time and commitment to the success of our students. Wishing you all a wonderful break and a happy new year. Ashley Smith.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Uh, we will have another opportunity for comment at the end of the meeting. If there is additional, uh, need to comment or, uh, reach out to a board member, our address, our email addresses are on the website. Uh, I will up, move ahead in the agenda to item five, which is something we also do every week, every month. Uh, where we offer the board the opportunity to, uh, suggest a future agenda item or a brief discussion item, which is not on the agenda for this evening. If anybody on the board has something they think we should have as a future agenda item, please, uh, let us know, uh, or you can email us myself or Dr. Lee Alley later. Or if you have something you think we need to discuss briefly, we can do so now as well. I would, I would suggest one future agenda item. I don't know where to place it, how far out we need, uh, and we'll work with Dr. Reality to figure that. Uh, but in light of the, um, very unfortunate school shooting in Michigan, I think it's always a good idea for parents to hear and the community to hear something about what we do to kids, keep, keep kids safe in our schools. Uh, short of giving away security details that are, uh, revealing information that we don't want to reveal. But, uh, I think it would be a good idea to refresh, uh, to, to bring some of that forth to the community, reassure people that we, we keep this as our highest priority, priority is keeping kids safe in our district. So I would suggest that in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you, Mark.
Anybody else? All right. So we're going to move on to any of the reports. Uh, on my notes, I don't see a PTO or alliance report. I'm going to start with, uh, the elementary school principal, Ms. Bay. Do you have a report for us tonight?
I do. I'm happy to, to start. Um, so this evening, first, hello, everybody. Great to see all of you. Happy December. Um, this evening, Mr. Blackman and I are both taking an opportunity to welcome new families. So tonight is about welcoming, celebrating, and introducing families who are new to our district. Um, and I'll speak specifically to LBES. So each year we do have new students to our school and therefore new families in the community. Um, this year I'm extending an extra dose of empathy as these families, the majority of them that I'm about to name tonight, moved to the Lake Bluff and Knollwood community during a pandemic. Um, so lots of extra thought and work going into that. Um, so I know that process has felt a little bit different. So extra empathy for the families. So wanted to share a couple of stats before I get into the names. Um, according to my notes, the number of new families at LBES, not including incoming kindergarteners, we are at forty-seven, forty-seven students. Um, students transferring from other schools. So, um, just a couple of numbers here, families that came that already lived in the Lake Bluff or Lake Forest communities. We have eight students that came to Lake Bluff Elementary School from, um, the other sort of schools within our area. So not necessarily changing residents, but moving to our school. Families or students that came from Chicago, surrounding suburbs or other Illinois towns and cities. We have sixteen students joining our community from another country. We have one family at LBES this year. Families that moved to Lake Bluff from another state. There are fourteen total families that came to us from eight different states throughout our country. Um, so tonight there, we did ask permission for families, um, to be able to share their names tonight. So from LBES, the number of those families include the Brun family, the Dylan family, the Rodriguez family, the Krishnan family, the Abrams family, the Kite Busen family, the Burgos Bennett family, the Schlead family, the Abrams family, the Lonergan family, the Hallock family, the Podesta family, the Bowie family, then one of our newest, the Gottenbosch family. So we are just so thrilled to have these new families in our school and our community and wanted to take an opportunity tonight to welcome all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blackmore?
Sure, I'll jump in. Uh, similar to, uh, LBES, LBMS had a number of new families. There is a little bit of overlap with some of those that Kelly just read, but, uh, we want to greet them none the same. Um, I'll let you know that we had twenty-five new families at LBMS. Uh, four of those were families that were actually returning to LBMS, having perhaps enrolled their kids somewhere else in the last few years. Um, then we had another fourteen, uh, that had come from other parts of Illinois. We had, um, uh, five that were from other states, uh, around the continental US. And then we have now two families that have just moved into our district, uh, from abroad. So two, uh, new international students. Uh, and I believe another one will be, uh, joining us here probably, uh, after winter break. So I'm looking forward to, uh, welcoming them. Uh, one of the things that, uh, Kelly did, same as, uh, I did in, uh, the middle school, was just make sure to ask permission before sharing these names. So I've got about five of those that were able to get back in touch with me about that. Uh, I'm really pleased to welcome the Washington family, uh, also the Abrams family. Uh, the end office, there's a student in both sixth, eighth, and eighth grade from that family. Uh, the Helix family as well as the Bennetts. Um, great to have some new students. Uh, one of the things that I always do when I, uh, give tours or introduce families to the middle school, and I know this is true at the elementary school as well, a lot of our students have gone to school together since kindergarten. And they do a fantastic job welcoming new students into our building. Very often they feel a little bit like celebrities the first couple of days. Um, because having new students in your classroom is always exciting. And so that's definitely something that I'm always very proud of is the welcoming environment that very, uh, that many of our students feel when they walk into the building. So, uh, we hope to keep that up. And I enjoyed having the opportunity to introduce some of those new families tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Blackmore. Does anybody have any questions for our principals?
Can I just add a quick story of welcoming? I had a, we had a new second grade student start last month and the privilege of meeting her in the office with her dad and walked her down to her classroom. And as we rounded the corner, a fifth grade student sort of stopped us in our tracks and looked at me and looked at her and said, are you new here to the new student? And I said, she is. And she goes, oh, you're just gonna love it here. And it was, I couldn't have scripted anything better. And I feel like it does summarize, um, our school and our community as we got closer to her classroom, her new classmates welcomed her. And on her cubby was a sign with her name and a welcome signed by all of her classmates. So I do have to extend gratitude to our teachers as they take extra time to welcome students and, and know that that's a difficult transition for students and families.
That's great. So does this, uh, question to both you guys, this is the first time since I've been on the board that I think we've done this. We've welcomed new families at the board meetings, which I think is a nice idea, a good tradition to start. But based on your, I, I guess, just your recollection, does it, do these numbers feel bigger than prior years, smaller than prior years, roughly the same? What's your guesstimate? I mean, I'm putting you on the spot. I'm sorry for doing that, but what do you, what's your, what's your intuition there?
I would go ahead and suggest that that's a, a larger number than we typically have at the middle school. Uh, twenty-five is fairly, uh, fairly big. I would say that we're usually closer to fifteen to twenty. Uh, so I don't know what to account for, uh, why, why we have a greater number this year, but we do. Um, I don't know. Kelly, how do you feel?
Yeah, so, um, I'll acknowledge I have about two years of data that I have access to in terms of, um, being in this role. I do feel like the numbers seem pretty high. Was trying to just pull up our two thousand and twenty-one sheet here to see last year. Now, this goes all the way through the school year, but we had closer to around sixty families, um, by the end of the, the springtime. And as Nate had said in his report, some of them are families that were enrolled with us a couple of years ago and maybe made some different decisions. Um, given kind of the environment last year that are returning to us. So those numbers are included, but either way, I, I do think it's, it's exciting.
I'm sure it's attributable to how awesome we are and how awesome you guys are. It's, it's, it's that simple. All right, thanks. Okay, now we're going to ask Mr. Khan if he has an update for us tonight.
I do. I've got three items. So we have some historical documents. The district had a safe deposit box, uh, at a bank with a bunch of historical documents in it that are worth preserving. There's some neat stuff in there. Uh, there's an abstract of title from eighteen ninety-four and the original bonds that were school bonds that were issued for the school in nineteen ninety-four. So lots of names of people who now have like streets and things named for them around the town. And it's been sitting in a box in my office for about five years. So I thought it'd be a good idea to do something with them and preserve them. So I'd like to look at maybe making a permit loan to the Lake Bluff Historical Society or something like that to, um, let somebody who knows what they're doing handle the documents and share them with all of Lake Bluff. So looking at doing that. Uh, also I reached out to our architect to explore doing a solar project, uh, at Lake Bluff School District. There's probably some, uh, state and federal subsidies that will become available in the next year and they're going to go quickly. So it would be, in order to take advantage of them, we should have a project ready to go, uh, when, if and when this money becomes available. Uh, so I've met with our, the lead, um, environmental engineer at White and Company, and they gave us a proposal for a study. It's a two-part study. The first part is a helioscope and electrical analysis that will look at the potential for the project, what, how much sun we get, um, what kind of square footage we have available. And then our electrical infrastructure, that is about four thousand dollars. And then if that looks favorable, they would continue to do a structural, structural analysis of our roof system, uh, to see that it can handle, if it can handle the increased load and that it's suitable for the arrays. And that's about eighty-five hundred. So that is something that we have, um, in the works and looking at possibly doing that, um, next year. in the works and looking at possibly doing that next year, next calendar year. And then also I wanted an update on salaries. In addition to bus drivers. We've been having, seeing shortages of substitute teachers, teaching assistants, secretaries, pretty much any non-licensed staff member. As a result, starting salaries are increasing. This has been, been seen pretty much industry-wide. And in order to remain competitive, we will likely need to make some adjustments. For, to our starting wages as well as some salaries for existing staff. And so in the spring, when we do, when we talk about salary increases for next year, we'll be bringing recommendations at that time. So it started in the early spring talking about that. And I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Does anybody on the board have any questions for, for Mr. Khan about that? Thank you. All right. Now we move on to Ms. Tracy Roerich, our Director of Student Services.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I just have two items for you tonight. So as we continue to make the social emotional well-being of our students a priority. We have decided to bring Simply Be back to Lake Bluff. So Simply Be is a local wellness organization, and they will be sending staff to our middle school for two days to conduct a few different activities. All students in grades six through eight will participate in a presentation from the Simply Be Social Workers on managing stress and anxiety. They will learn mindfulness strategies, mindset and self-talk strategies, as well as other coping strategies. Then during their wellness time, they will, they will participate in a yoga session. After school, teachers will be invited to also participate in their own yoga session. And then in the evening, we'll be offering a parent event through Zoom. That will discuss similar strategies that were presented to the students on helping parents manage their own stress and anxiety. As well as helping their children with coping strategies and managing stress and anxiety. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that it's hard to believe, but we are beginning to plan for extended school year and summer school. And so we first are starting to look at staffing. I've already reached out to our staff to see who is interested. In working extended school year and summer school for the coming year. Our extended school year offering is for students with individualized education plans who require that extension onto the school year. In order to receive a free and appropriate public education. And our summer school offering, we hope to mirror what we had last year, which was some academic programming in the areas of reading, writing and math. With some enrichment activities for students. So last year we were offered, we were able to offer a wellness activity and esteem activity. To all of our groups of students. So we hope to have a similar experience for this coming summer. And that is all that I have.
Tracy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe last year we offered a program that was not, there was no cost to students. Was that correct?
Correct. So our extended school year offering is always at no cost to the students who require it as part of their individualized education program. But last year we also provided that academic support in reading and writing and math for all students at no cost to families.
And are we doing the same thing this year or has it changed?
So we haven't made that decision yet. That's still a discussion amongst our admin team. And so we will be making that decision soon because as our planning moves forward, we'll need to have that information out to families. So usually we send the information out to families, hopefully at some point in February. And so we would have that decision made before then.
Thank you.
Mark, if I could, that last year we used a federal grant money to pay for summer school and that money has been used. So if we did not charge for it, that would be a district expense.
Understood. Thank you. All right. So we're going to move on. I have a very brief president's report. I just want to, just want to take a moment. As we wrap up the current calendar year, and this is our last meeting for twenty twenty-one. All I wanted to say was I wanted to take a moment to express some sincere gratitude for all, for all the work that our administrators, teachers and support staff. They do at both our schools. I really appreciate all your hard work and your commitment to the students in District sixty-five. I hope you all have some kind of wonderful holiday and an opportunity to enjoy some quality time with family and friends this holiday season. So thank you for all you do. Now, if we have a superintendent's report, we'll move to that.
Thank you. And I want to thank you on behalf of the staff of District sixty-five. Everyone is working really hard. And everyone needs a much, has a much deserved break coming. So I also have a few updates. First, I'd like to address some COVID-related issues. As you may or may not have heard, we are experiencing a spike in cases in our zip code that's similar to the rest of the county. And we continue to move along with our contact tracing and communicating with our families around positive cases and quarantines, et cetera. And want to express our gratitude toward the families of Lake Bluff for cooperating with us. COVID fatigue is real. It is, everyone is struggling, that we are continuing to battle this. But that is the reality. We are. We continue to monitor the guidance from the local health department. I continue to meet with them once a week with the rest of the Lake County superintendents. And although we do see that uptake in cases right now, we are hopeful that with our vaccination rates and other efforts that we've been making. In the last couple of months, that we will see some relief after the beginning of the, the calendar year. And we are certainly advocating, I along with other superintendents, advocating to meet with our legislators to discuss a plan for moving forward. I don't know what that plan could look like or what the metrics might be that the state would be able to look at. In order to move us out of some of these mitigations or at least ease the burden that's going on in school districts across the county. And obviously, we would want to make sure that whatever we do to reduce mitigations, we keep everyone safe and healthy. We do feel it's imperative that we have some direction from the state in terms of where we're going with this and where the off-ramp might be. I appreciate you recognizing the hard work. I cannot underestimate, I continue to say this, the work of our nurses and our health aide. Our health clerk at LBES, they are working all the time, really, to, to communicate with families and make sure everyone's safe. And I know that they deal with a lot of families who are frustrated. They're communicating with people who are tired and who are also frustrated. And I recognize both sides of that. And I just want to say that we are advocating as, as hard as we can. To figure out where we're headed with this and try to provide some relief where we can. On a local level, we're reviewing the guidance and looking to make any adjustments that we can after winter break. One of those that we'll be making is based on some of the feedback that we've received from the community regarding communication and notifications. As was reflected in the public comment this evening. We will be, after the first of the year, treating COVID cases as we have with Stryp or other infections in the past. And only notifying classrooms, parents in classrooms when there is a positive case, as well as continuing to personally contact families who may be in close contact. In terms of a dashboard, just very honestly, that is a time-consuming thing to keep up with. And I'm not sure that we have the capacity to keep it real time. And I certainly would not want to put our administrative team in the position of having to add more work. We obviously keep track of our cases. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer those in terms of how many cases and things that people are seeing each week. But we feel like at this point, hopefully, like we've said with the vaccination rates. We will hopefully see a downturn in the number of cases and we can hopefully just communicate that to classrooms. We are asking parents to upload your vaccination cards and information when you can, so that we can reduce that load of communication for our nurses when there is a positive case. I want to thank our volunteers, in-house volunteers and also Passport Health for supporting the vaccination efforts in Lake Forest and Lake Bluff over the last three weeks. And again, our hope is to put this behind us as quickly as possible while we keep everyone healthy and safe. There's a lot of great work that's going on in terms of instruction and education. And we do want to make sure our focus is there. Any questions on COVID?
One quick question, because I've got a question about this. Where do people upload their vaccination cards? We've emailed directly to the nurse, but we're actually.
So you can email them directly, but we have sent out surveys and we will send it out again after the first of the year, once people, once our kiddos are fully vaccinated. So we're going to try to periodically send that out. And in that Google Doc, you have the ability to just upload a photo of the vaccine card. And then that becomes part of our database. Obviously, if it's not in there, we'll still call and just ask and verify. And parents can upload it at that time. Any other questions on COVID? Okay, I want to briefly talk about Thrive. So our Thrive Committee has been meeting all year, I think, as a, as a full committee. As you know, this is a large committee. We took any volunteers that wanted to work with us on this. We have over forty volunteers between parents, community, staff and administrators. Who've been working on this initiative. I think we've met three times as a full committee. And as of this week, our subcommittees, at this point there are four, are now meeting for the second time. The discussions have been very productive. I'm looking forward to giving you a more comprehensive update. Once we, once we've kind of gathered the information we're looking to gather and made our next plan of action. But at this point, we're really working on ensuring that we have an accurate reality of how kids are feeling, how parents feel about the environment in Lake Bluff sixty-five. And where we don't feel like we maybe have all the information, we're starting to generate some questions that we might be able to put out to our community of parents. And students, for those who want to give us that information, so that we can round out that current picture and we can make our action steps moving forward. I want to thank everyone for the commitment to this work. There's a lot going on right now. People are really busy and we have continued to move forward. And that's due to the efforts of everyone who's volunteering. So thank you for that. And then lastly, I just want to update everyone on the Portrait of a Learner project. We had our first, I think, ever joint tri-district administrative team meeting. On Monday, December sixth, between District sixty-five, sixty-seven and one fifteen. Again, we just appreciate the opportunity to partner with Lake Forest districts in this way. And we think it's going to be a really exciting and productive process. And one thing that we talked about was what an opportune time this is for this discussion. Had we done this a couple of years ago and then undergone the, the last two years, we might be looking to redo it again. But right now, we're like at a really good spot to have a really healthy discussion about what the future holds and how we might want to prepare our children differently. For what's coming based on where we feel like we are right now. So I just ask everyone to be on the lookout for communications on this. We'll be talking soon about who will be on that, on that group. It's going to be a big group and it's going to be exciting. So thank you for your support.
Lisa, if, if you could just step back a half a step and just for the record, if for anybody watching, can you tell, give a brief update on what Portrait of a Learner is all about?
Sure, absolutely. So Dr. Montgomery joined us, I think, a couple of meetings ago from sixty-seven and one fifteen to talk about the process. But essentially what we'll be designing together is a community of stakeholders from all three of our districts. Will be a vision for what we want for our students after they've matriculated through our elementary districts and through District one fifteen. And what we're talking about is not really standards. We're not talking about knowledge and skills. We're talking about competencies. Or things that we want for students above and beyond what we're mandated to educate on. So we're talking about what we used to call twenty-first century skills, but we're now in the twenty-first century and obviously things have changed a lot. So we'll be talking about things like, what do we feel like our kids need to be able to do or understand to be successful in the future? And it's a future that's fairly uncertain. You know, when we think about our kindergartners right now and, you know. When they might retire in the twenty-sixties, you know, seventies, what the world might look like at that time and the pace of change that we've been encountering. It's hard to even predict, but we do know that there are some competencies that will help them be more successful. And that's where we want to get stakeholder input and really have good conversations about what our classrooms need to do, what that vision is. So that we can shoot beyond what we need to do to what we want for our students in this community.
Thanks. Any other questions for Dr. Lee Alley?
I have a quick, will the representation from the three districts be equal for that or will it be?
So that was a great, that's a great question. It's something that we brought up at our tri-district meeting. Because at our table, what we talked about was just representation really matters and making sure that we include members of our community. So that all aspects really have a voice. And Dr. Montgomery and I have already kind of said, like, you know, there are ways to facilitate this big group. That's why we've hired a facilitator. If we need a few extra seats to make sure that all districts feel like they have the representation they need, we will do that. It might not be even numbers, but our administrative team will be looking to make sure that all areas in our district have a voice at the table. And I think that's what's really important.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move on to our discussions and presentations. Our first item is, has to do with our legislative priorities for twenty-one and twenty-two. Just a little background, we formed a committee currently with Andy Duran and Amy Kendall Donahue, who is meeting with board members. From Lake Forest District one fifteen and Lake Forest District sixty-seven. So similar to the Portrait of a Learner, we are working as part of three districts together. Because we all have vested interests in getting kids out of high school with, in the best possible place. So we have, part of the job as a board member is to advocate on behalf of our districts with our legislators. And we thought that we could be even more efficient and effective in that is if we combine the power of three districts together. So what we bring to the board tonight is a summary of legislative priorities that were agreed upon by the committees. The joint committee that the board needs to discuss and decide how comfortable they are with that and moving ahead of that. Because we will be voting on adopting that priority, legislative priority list later in the evening. Not sure how we want to move forward on that, Dr. Lee Alley. I think.
Yeah. So I think that was a great summary and I, I do want to open it if Andy and Amy have anything that they want to share. But I think that's exactly what the conversation needs to be tonight. It's just if there's any questions or anything, any discussion items that we want to have. As a board and leadership team before deciding on whether or not to support the priorities. But essentially, by supporting them, it doesn't really mean that anything takes place after that. What we're doing is putting our name to this document to say that we are standing kind of with, as a three district. You know, collaborative unit to say that we support these things. But obviously, as changes, if they were to take place, they, they happened, we would be discussing as a board how we wanted to. In District sixty-five, address those changes at a local level. So.
The only thing I'll add is that a lot of the ones that were decided, and really I have to thank John Noble from District one fifteen's board, who really organized this process. But many of these are about having just additional local control and advocating for our board to be able to make decisions for the, for the community as a whole.
Overall theme.
That's the, that's the reason for, yeah, for doing it really. So that's with that context, I might help.
I would, sorry. Would also add, just in general, for anybody listening, that every one of these priorities have to do with state mandates. And in general, state mandates are unfunded. And so all the, the costs associated with these requirements fall on the individual districts. Regardless of your ability to pay or how it may or may not specifically apply to your district, because sometimes things just don't make. We're left scratching our heads sometimes about why this applies, this may or may not apply to us. But nonetheless, all these priorities have to do with mandates. Sorry, whoever's speaking up, please go ahead.
That was me. Um, I was just asking, so the next step as, after we discuss and perhaps vote, it will be sent to who? And are we also looking to other neighboring districts to agree to this, to start a movement? Or is it just like our stance on these particular items?
There's been discussion with many districts around us. At this point, it's just us and one fifteen and sixty-seven. Putting, you know, signing off on it essentially. But I think the, the bigger picture, if I'm, if I'm missing anything, is yes, that it would be a bigger group in time. It just is a matter of everybody being on the exact same page.
Right. So it goes like the governor? Is that where we're requesting this from or just over the state of Illinois?
I don't know if all that's fleshed out yet. I mean, it's, it's, the goal is that this would be, these would be things we would advocate for with our legislators ultimately. And we would, together, as opposed to just us advocating for what we wanted, sixty-seven, they want to one fifteen and other districts. It would be us as a, you know, a group of districts advocating for these things we've agreed on. Now that we may have extra things they don't care about, they may have actually, we don't care about, but these things related to local control would be priorities that we would advocate for with our local governor. So that, with our legislators, so that when additional things came up that were in line with this, that we would have a process. So it's very early. we would have a process. So it's very early. I mean, it's just getting the work started, but the three districts working together is positive stuff.
And the, the information or the the beliefs are going through legislators, not, it's not going through like the IASB.
So I love the idea of us working with, you know, our neighbors in Lake Forest. I think that's great. And I do like the idea of local control. But my question is, are there any hesitancies that we should be thinking about before we decide whether or not we support this?
I have some thoughts. And I'll try to re-brie. I wrote it down, so I wouldn't ramble, but are there like specific mandates that we're upset about that are harming us providing an exceptional education to our students? Or are we just saying we're high-performing districts, we don't need, we don't want the state to pass mandates on to us?
The first. So there, there are things, see, I get an example that really hit home with me was mandating certain trainings or certain classes that our teachers would have to take. And it costs money, and it takes time, and it may not be the most efficient way to do things. And it doesn't mean that they don't necessarily need something, but if it's being made, if that decision's being made by someone who doesn't really know the district specifically and saying, all right, blanket across everyone, this needs to be done. Obviously, there can be issues with that. It's not to say that there, there might not be things where it's better if there isn't all decisions being made right here.
Well, right. So would that fall to us then? Would that be a board, start to be, some of these mandates go to the wayside of maybe like continuing education per certain aspects of the teachers, like, then is that going to be on the board to keep up with? What do we think that teachers need to do? Like where?
Well, the board isn't, we're not educated to tell the teachers what training they need. Right? So that, I mean, that would be, that would be the administration making those decisions. Okay.
Mark, it might help if you're, not to put you on the spot, but to provide some historical context on some of these irrelevant state mandates have been in the past and sort of some, how that impacts the districts. And I think the key to some of those is that there have been things that have been unfunded, that have been mandated, that have taken administrative time and away from. You have a much better historical view of that than probably anybody else does. So maybe just an example or two would be helpful if you don't mind.
Yeah, I would start out by saying in the board packet, for anybody paying attention, the, the summary of priorities includes a link to a list of the most recent two hundred, plot, two hundred plus unfunded mandates that have come down from the state over the past. I'm not sure how far it goes back, to be honest with you.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Ninety-two, and, and all of them are unfunded. And all of them, none of them, one of our, one of the legislative priorities was to have a fiscal analysis included in all new unfunded mandates so that districts could, before they begin work, get some idea of what this is going to cost them. And none of these have done that. So we have no way of quantifying unless we tracked each one individually, or the state tracked all of the cost to all the districts. No, nobody has any way of quantifying any of that. I wish I had thought, I wish I had known that I was going to get asked this question, because I would have come better prepared to, to rattle off a couple off the top of my head. But there's been.
I can speak to some of the, some of what are more high-profile mandates that I think people are aware of, and one would be standardized assessment. And so there are definitely mandated assessments that all school districts have to engage in. One of the more recent ones was the kids' assessment, which is a kindergarten readiness assessment that happens of the first forty days of a child's kindergarten career. It's an observational assessment. Teachers implement it, and they need to put evidence into a system, a state system, and then we have data that comes out of that that indicates readiness for kindergarten. That, again, requires training. It requires time. When it was first put into place, there were a lot of districts who were trying to accomplish this within a half-day kindergarten program, and it was also almost impossible. And so some of the mandates, you know, are put into place, and then districts start doing it, and then modifications are made because there's, you know, feasibility issues or things. So sometimes there's a process for kind of changing things or, or making things a little bit more applicable. But either way, there's different, differing opinions across the state on whether or not this assessment is something that gives us instructional or usable information for students, whether or not it's applicable. And I would say the issue becomes very complicated because every district in Illinois has a different set of resources. They have a different set of funding. They have different monies that are set aside for different things, and they also have different local assessments that they feel are more appropriate for their students sometimes. The state mandated assessments, although they cost money and time, are also typically free. You don't need to purchase the assessment. You might have to expend money and time to do it and do it well. But then you're not actually purchasing the assessment, where we might purchase like a map assessment or a map for primary grades. So some of the contention has to just do with some districts like ours already have assessments that we give to students in those grades that we purchased that we feel are more appropriate for the students' readiness when they come into our system. Some districts don't have the ability to do that. And so for them, they might really embrace a kid's assessment and feel like that's something that's really appropriate. And so there are definitely a lot of those types of mandates that are really impactful. And then there's some about, you know, outlining emergency exits with, you know, reflective tape. And, you know, there are some things that are really less important, still cost money and time. Not as, you know, high-profile as something that takes the amount of time that an assessment takes every year. So each one could be argued that they're important for some, and each one probably has a set of people who really doesn't think that that should be a priority for whatever reason.
Let me back up. Oh, I was just back up for a minute. I know you have other things, Tim, but I think my thought in, in having some of these discussions with the districts is twofold. One, our board has never really gotten involved in any sort of legislative work. So just getting started in that. Where that goes, that's for future boards to figure out, but I'm just getting started. And this isn't about, I think, advocating for any particular piece of legislation or bill. There's nothing listed in here like that. There's, you know, it's really to encourage and advocate for reform processes if and when our board chooses that we, we want to question something, or, you know, exemption processes if and when our district decides we want to be exempt from something the state's mandating. So it's about giving us the freedom to do those things and, and working towards, and I think the work will grow, and, you know, our board and future boards will, will, will grow on it. But it's just about getting started in the work and having a, a team behind it with some priorities that are aligned. There's other priorities that won't be aligned. You know, so we're just talking about these, these few. I just want to make sure that was, kind of the history of the work was framed.
I, I'd like to give some, some more, just Andy asked about historical context, too. I, I, one, I appreciate Dr. Lealie for bailing me out there. Thank you.
Sorry, Mark.
That's fine, because I knew she would step in. But the historical perspective I can provide is, so I am now sitting with my fourth superintendent in Lake Bluff since I started, beginning all the way back with Dr. Asplund, and then Dr. Ben Martindale, and then Dr. Sophie. And I can tell you, I have been, had multiple conversations with each one of these people where they expressed frustration with unfunded mandates. I've been on the True North, formerly NSSED Board since two thousand and thirteen. And so that's two superintendents there, and I've heard the same from them and from individual superintendents who sit on the governing board there over the years. So this is not just us. This is, this is, and I hear this at the triple I conference that we go to every year from various board members, superintendents, and the meetings I attend. It's, the process is frustrating, it's cumbersome, and the fact that it's not paid for makes it very difficult for, for many districts to, to enact these things in good faith. So that's the historical perspective I can provide. Back to Tim.
Sorry. So I, reading the priorities, and this might just be me, this might just be how I viewed it. I watched Lake Forest other meetings to see how they discussed it, because I'm interested in hearing more. And reading it to me, it, it seems like we just don't want mandates, and I guess there's not enough specifics for me. I'm of the thought, like, I, I went through the two hundred and eighteen mandates, fourteen pages or whatever it was, and there's it's been thirty years. It's about seven or eight different things a year, and some of them are ridiculous. Printing textbooks with soybean oil or soybean ink is, is, for instance, but some of them, they provide safety for our kids. They provide a well-rounded education for our kids. They, that I don't know that districts would do on their own. And it's like, it's important for middle schoolers to teach, to learn civics for a semester. I know that takes away time from other things. I know it takes changes to curriculums, but it's like sprinklers should be in new school buildings. There should be cross-arms on school buses in our school, and are we going to do that on our own? I don't know. So I, I understand the frustration. I understand ninety percent of our funding comes from our local tax dollars, but looking through that list, it wasn't as, and I, I don't know as much as, as our administration, as other, you know, people in education, but looking at the list, there's not things that are just, it wasn't filled with unreasonable things. And reading the priorities, I see that, and it's like mandates are awful. We don't need them, and part of it is.
I think the idea.
Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the idea behind it is that we have more flexibility, not necessarily there will be no mandates ever again, because that, I mean, that that'll never happen, I would imagine, but that there's more flexibility or more input by the local schools versus things being decided that really don't make sense, because there's certainly plenty of mandates out there that do make sense. And the document that really John put together that they've been working off of and getting our feedback and other districts' feedback is very general. I know you like specifics.
It, right. No, but it would be more helpful to me if there were specific things, because to me, this reads just like, we don't need this, and I, that's what I find.
Tim.
Yes.
I got, I got that flavor from it as well. I, I agree with what you're saying. I think what it comes down to for me is that really what, what we're asking for. Because initially, when I read it too, I was a little turned off, like, oh, this is, it seemed a little protesty. I agree. But I think we could solve that with some sort of policy or something. If this went the way that we would be asking for it to go, where we would have more local control, it wouldn't mean mandates be damned, right? It would mean we get to decide which mandates apply to us and we want to work on, right? And perhaps we could solve the issue of or the worry that we wouldn't pay attention to any of them with some sort of policy, like it's somebody's job or somebody's responsibility to focus on these, recommend which ones we need to adopt. Is that a feasible thing?
Yeah, I think that would be the discussion we would have to have. There'd have to be some criteria for us to consider, even bringing in a mandate forward for discussion so that we would have some kind of process for vetting which kinds or what the what the content might be or what the expectation or even a dollar amount. There could be lots of different criteria that we look at to bring it forward for a discussion. And then that's assuming that there would be an exemption process, which is part of this.
Right. So I mean, I think to me, that would make me feel more comfortable, because I do like the idea of local control, but I also think it's really important that these safety things and these important mandates are adhered to. And so maybe that's a way to bridge that gap.
And I guess one of my issues is, I mean, I'll just go out and say it, one of my issues is the tone of all this. And the tone of how it's been presented. And I think if we're aiming to work with our legislators and have them work with us and listen to our concerns, we shouldn't be antagonizing them. And I feel that frankly, that that's been going on in some areas when, when this has been presented. And I mean, there are voices at the state level. I think we should if there's specific items, I think it's our job as a board to, to go to them and say, we have an issue with this, that's go, with this item that's going through the legislature. And I know the legislature can move quickly, but IASB sends us emails when things are going on and gives us a rundown. I appreciate the administration giving us information when there's things of issues. So I guess to me, that would be more potentially proactive way to do, to do things. And my main concern is that by putting this out is, I don't want I don't want our, our district, our group of districts to be looked at and as, as if we're, you know, we know better than you. We we need, we need a voice at the state level, and I feel that's what I mean, that's why we have a state representative and a state senator, and I think whatever we can do to build a positive relationship with them is, is good. And I, I just, I don't know. I don't know if, if this is the best, the best way for that. And I don't have, I don't have a, a good, a good answer, and I, that's not very helpful to anyone, but I, I just there's something about this that just doesn't feel right to me, and I can't necessarily put my finger on it, but it I, I just feel good to try to build that relationship with our, with our legislators, as opposed to just putting out this saying, you know, we want the local control, we want all these things, and if you don't help us with this, we're going to vote you out of office. I don't think that's helpful.
Well, I think you are on some, like, I agree, it didn't sit well with me, and he articulated it better than I did. It does feel not like the path that I would be willing to take personally.
So then, I don't disagree. I think, I think we're overthinking it a bit, but that's okay. I don't disagree. This is very early work. So I think what our committee then needs is a direction from the board on how you want us to proceed, because our involvement in this, my thought going in was keep it very simple. Nothing in the, I'm, I'm focused on the thing that's in our board packet, which I don't find antagonistic at all. I'm, I'm ignoring all, some of the other stuff that went into it, because that's really not where the work is at the moment. So some other stuff, I agree with you in terms of tone and some of those other things prior to where we landed. I would agree. I think where we landed in terms of what's actually in the board packet, asking for just a way that we can exempt from things that we decide we think we don't want to be exempted from, you know, not, so I think what we, what would be helpful then is if we can have some direction for the board of what the next steps are, because it sounds like we're not anywhere close to ready to approve this, and that's fine. But I do think we need some direction on how we want to proceed, because this is early work. District's never done it before, at least any of us have had involvement with. It's definitely being driven by Lake Forest, which maybe is part of, part of some of the trepidation. I'm sensing, I'm not, no one's saying that, but I'm sensing it. So I think if that's the case, we can we can discuss how to handle that, but I do think we need some direction on how to report as a committee.
I think, yeah, and for me, it was like, there are some trigger words of what's just even going on lately with like local control and mandates and things like that. It makes me a little uneasy to take such a strong stance against mandates, like Tim said. So yeah, I would like, if there was rewording or more last words, I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, to me, it'd be helpful to, and I understand, and I appreciate from the change from the initial list from a few months ago, this is definitely much more focused and it, it's a few things, and, and that I appreciate, but I guess I, for me, it was hard to to understand kind of what was pushing this because there wasn't specific. So I guess that would just be would be helpful. And and this is, is silly, I understand, but like just stating that, you know, like, there are some relevant mandates that have been passed by the state over the last however many years. And there, you know, not everything is irrelevant, not everything is outdated. I understand pretty much everything is unfunded, but that doesn't mean that it it's bad.
There's just some more inclusive language, like, you know, so it's not we're stating in here that it's, I just want to make sure I understand. So we're stating in here that it is acknowledging the fact that there have been irrelevant ones and whatnot, not. acknowledging the fact that there have been irrelevant ones and whatnot, not leaving out the fact that there it's inferred, in my opinion, but you were saying plainly state that that's, that's an easy fix. I think.
There are reasonable mandates, is that we.
Right. I I mean, I.
But some mandates have not been like.
Right. And I completely agree with that. And and I I know part of the prior presentations are making me think the way I am and how it's been been presented. But to me, that it kind of just goes hand in hand and I'm bringing that in when I read this. And I know, I know other people aren't, but that's, I I don't want, I don't want to dampen our relationship with our legislators.
No, of course not. Yeah. And I think, and maybe it makes sense to call out, you know, our board strategy. And maybe it's just us independently or them on, because I know you've established relationships with legislators. You know, what is our board strategy for establishing those relationships? Because I know I have personal relationships with our local legislators. I know you do too. But how do we approach that as a board? And maybe that's a part of this that's separate, you know, that we can talk about as a, I don't know if it's policy or what it is. I will say, I agree in the early stages and the very first conversations we had. I I didn't like the tone either, so. But I I think, yeah, I mean, I think we're, I think we're not that far away, to be honest with you. I think that that's like I said, I I'm ignoring some of the earlier conversations because I think it landed in a bit of a different place. But I I think unless you, you know, but I think we had at least some guidance to where we go with the rest of the, you know, with the other two boards at least.
And I do appreciate, like, I think it's great that we're working together as a district. I mean, we're close proximity. Our kids go to Lake Forest High School. We should be working together. And so I don't want to make it seem like, I don't think we should be working on that. And I do appreciate both of you, your work on on this. So I I don't mean to be difficult or antagonize. I mean, I just have have reservations about it. So thank you for listening and.
Tim, Tim, I appreciate you bringing, pointing some of these things out. I think they're worthy of discussion and probably some more discussion. But before we continue, I I have a couple of thoughts on it, but I would, I want to involve our administration in this discussion. I would point out that culturally, philosophically, the way this board has run over the past, since I've been involved with it is that we are part of a team with our administration. And I think that is a little different perspective than how Lake Forest runs their schools and their boards. This legislative priority action is a is work of the board in Lake Forest. I would like it to be not only work of the board, but work of the district, work of the administration. So with that being said, I would love to hear Dr. Lee Alley's perspective on these priorities and the implications of the way they are written.
So thank you. I I appreciate that. I think there's, I I think Tim brings up some great points. I think overall it's a great thing for us to be advocating together, for us to be working together and talking together. We share children, we share community members. We all want wonderful things for our kids. We all want to be good stewards of our taxpayers' money. We all want to make sure we're doing the right things and placing the right things at the top of the priority list. I think in terms of concerns, they probably come a little bit later in the process because if we were to sign on to this, I think there's a lot of work if something like this were to materialize. If we were to have good conversations with our legislators and things started to change and we, to Ann's point, started to have some flexibility or have a process where we could exempt ourselves out of mandates. That's where I think things might get a little bit more interesting. Because I I I think I'm absolutely in favor of having some criteria. Those would be big discussions to talk about. What would it be that would trigger a discussion at a board level about a mandate? So would it be content? Would it be dollar amount? Would it be time and energy? Would it be, there could be a lot of different things. And then ultimately, the work of the board is public. And so all of those conversations regarding the criteria of what we would look at, how much we would look at and how we would have the discussions would obviously all be in open session. And so some of these issues, as Tim alluded to, are really kind of basic and I wouldn't really require a lot of discussion. But some might, and in particular, in terms of content and curricular adjustments and things like that. I think that, you know, these decisions are made far removed from the local board level. And I think that the point about establishing good relationships with our local legislators is well taken. And I think that that's not something that we alone can do. We have elected officials, we have community members who can also voice their opinions and get involved in that at much higher levels than we are. So, you know, it goes, you know, legislation like this goes through a lot of different levels. There's opportunities with your legislator, there's opportunities with the General Assembly, there's opportunities with the Illinois State Board of Education. You know, there's lots of different places at which advocacy can take place. I think when it does come to us, I would not be opposed to having those discussions about how we might want to consider what we would bring to the board level. But I also know that a lot of these mandates are provisions for us to discuss anyway at an administrative level. And so a lot of those things we do, you know, we have some flexibility on maybe how we implement the curriculum or or what resources that we decide to have. And I think one of the goals for us as an administrative team is to be as transparent and inclusive as possible with our community of parents and stakeholders, all stakeholders. I think we've tried to do that over various issues. And one of the things that will probably come out of a Thrive Task Force or something like that will be a more inclusive process for allowing parent comment or encouraging parents to come and and make some decisions with us or bet resources and curriculum. So we're looking for ways and opportunities to do that anyway, even if we have these mandates and and have to enact them. So I think regardless of where this goes, we can do a better job of including parents and community in the decisions that we make regarding what happens in the classrooms and what impacts students. I don't, again, I think it's really promising that we have a relationship that's getting more involved with our neighbors in Lake Forest. I think that's a really good thing. That is something that the board that hired me was really interested in us developing was just a more engaged relationship with those three, with the three districts. And I'm proud of that, that that effort is moving forward on various levels. But I do think, I I think that if this were to move forward, there would be a lot of conversations that would need to take place. And I think that's where a lot of the thinking would have to be done at a board level. And obviously, the administrative team is happy to be supporting those conversations and involved as much as possible. Does that help?
It always helps. Any other questions or comments on on any of this?
It sounds like maybe what we need to do is not even think about legislative priorities at the moment and just think about what we want out of the process in general. Because I think that hasn't been well defined. So that may be, maybe taking multiple steps back and not focus on priorities while we may have priorities. But actually focus on what do we want out of this process of working with the other two boards? Where do we see that going two years, four years, six years down the road? How does that, how does the administration play into that? And here are our outcomes we're looking for and then we can work towards those. So and maybe finding priorities is way down that list somewhere, but I think maybe we need to back up and and do that. So I would suggest it's not the time to add future agenda items, but I would suggest adding as a future agenda item.
We can do that.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Andy.
I I would suggest that there's been a lot of work done on this priority list between our districts. And that's huge. We haven't, we haven't worked closely with the boards in either Lake Forest District ever in the eleven years I've been on this board. And I think this is a huge first step and I don't want to, I don't want to waste that effort. I'm hoping that, you know, I'm not sure I'm hearing enough positive feedback to get this thing approved tonight. But I'm hoping we can suggest, we cannot throw this in the trash and have to start from scratch. So we might be able to do twin tracks of what Andy's suggesting as well as reword this in. So what I'm hearing from most of the feedback is that most of the issues on this have to do with tone. Tone being inconsistent with the culture of this board, this administration, this town, this district. And maybe we can bring that kind of feedback back to the tribe district committee and and have it reflect a tone that we're more comfortable with. That would be my suggestion rather than abandon this effort. But that's up to each of you as individuals to vote as you see fit and give your recommendations.
Would it be helpful to come with suggestions to that next legis, I mean, you know, have some conversations maybe between a couple of board members? Think about suggesting language that we might be more comfortable with.
When are you meeting again with this group?
We don't have another date that I'm aware of. I was going to reach out. I actually started an email to John Noble right now to ask if we could do that. So, I mean, after the meeting, I don't email during the meetings. But, yeah, I think that we'll, we'll get a meeting scheduled. Before then, it would be great to have some.
I do like Mark's idea of not just abandoning it, right? Because we don't want it to look like, oh, you know, yeah, we're done with this work or we're done with this partnership because we don't want to be done with either of those things, right? So I like your idea, Mark, of maybe just working towards getting more comfortable with what we already have a foundation with.
Having it sound a little bit more like well, or a little bit it can find. I don't know how much you're able to add to it. If we could, it'd be fun.
Good. Yeah, I'd be comfortable. I don't want to see all your hard work just go away. I, but I, and there's certainly things on here that I agree with. So, yeah, I would be comfortable with with that approach as well.
All right. Any other comments on this or should we move on? Not hearing any. Item B tonight is a discussion of, we're going to recap some of our triple I discussion on the professional development. So the idea is to have the board discuss professional development that received at the triple I conference. And just as background, anybody watching, six or so of us, five or six of us attended the the Joint Annual Conference of the Illinois Association of School Boards, the Illinois Association of School Administrators and the Illinois Association of School Business Officials in Chicago. The weekend before Thanksgiving, we all attended numerous seminars and events. And I think it might be nice for board members to kind of talk about their experience a little bit and and their experiences. I I can lead that off, you know, saying I I went Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I went down Friday. I attended two, two seminars on Friday. One was called Bridging What Divides Us. And a second one, which was Equity and Educational Imperative. The first one was on, you know, trying to foster and and work through difficult conversations, which are getting more and more commonplace in this day and age. And the second seminar was called Equity and Educational Imperative. And it highlighted some of the important work on equity that's being done in the, across the country and across Illinois today. And how it made me feel good that we have started these initiatives, but also made me realize that we have a lot of work to do because there's other districts that are quite a bit farther along than we are. On Saturday, my primarily responsibility was attending the delegate conference, which is a conference of delegates from potentially all of the school boards across the state. There's eight hundred and fifty some odd school boards. I think the total count was a little under three hundred delegates attended. And they voted on a a whole slate of resolutions. And I was our district's representative to cast our board's vote, not my own individual vote. And it was not terribly exciting, had to sit there for quite a while to, as they work through some new technology. They were trying to vote using phones as opposed to holding up big fans where you say yea or nay. The the one resolution of note was resolution to the Student Safety and Protection Act, which had to do with allowing teachers and administrators or volunteers to be armed within school buildings in the district. That failed. That's the third time in a row that 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 resolution has failed that this one district has brought to to the delegate assembly. That was a big one that drew a lot of attention. And then the other thing that I always attend that I would draw attention to is the presidential roundtable opportunities that they have. Two that I know that I attended were opportunities to meet with president, board presidents from other districts to share and learn. Because there's so much wisdom out there that there's always something to pick up and something to share from your peers. I attended one of those with Tim, so I, I think it was probably a little eye opening for Tim to 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 go there and see what what goes on at some of those meetings. But I'm glad he was able to attend with me. So that's kind of was my experience. It was a lot of fun getting to know the board a little bit, having dinner and drinks with people. We intended some event, some fun events in the evening. And I would encourage anybody else who has never attended to to do it as well. It's it's a good, good opportunity. And if anybody else would like to share what they they experienced, please do.
I thought it was a great weekend as well. We did have opportunity and time to, you know, kind of come together as a board, which was amazing. I also thought that the, what were the big speakers called in the big group?
Keynote.
The keynote speakers were great, yes. On Friday and Saturday, both of them. And one of the things I walked away with, that I remember walking away with last time as well, too, is a perspective of how fortunate our district is. When you're there with all of these other, you know, school boards across the state and you hear the challenges and the problems that they're facing, it just gives you such that perspective shift of we're really fortunate with the problems that we face. And that's a great way to look at it. I did attend a session on mental health and social emotional learning. And that also left me feeling good because a lot of what they were suggesting, we already do in our district. And we really seemed to kind of have a jump on that and do a lot of good work towards that. So that was encouraging as well. And then, yes, the equity discussion was big all over the whole weekend. And it was encouraging to see how much work we're already doing on that as well.
I was going to say the same thing about the equity, like that was a theme for sure across everything we saw, no matter what we were seeing. And agreed with you on the social emotional. It was, I, that was eye opening.
It was.
To listen to some of the other districts' challenges and just starting to get their arms around managing it. And and certainly to learn some new ideas as well.
I'll piggyback on that. Basically, I walked away on phase, which I think is like a really like kudos to Mark and Lisa for onboarding our new members because I was not surprised at anything. I felt like I went in there knowing a lot of what we were supposed to be doing and what our current administration is working on and felt really confident in our group. It felt good, you know, and helpful to listen to everybody else have their issues and whatnot. But we did a parent, like, do you wear your parent hat or do you wear a board hat? Meeting Roundtable at the last day and I found that really interesting because I learned a few things. And it was really cool to see how many new board members are also parents out there. It was fun all around.
Yeah, I just add real quick, I thought it was a wonderful experience. It really made you appreciate how diverse the state of Illinois is. And it it was just nice to to talk to other, other board members, other new board members. I, one session that stood out to me was on community engagement. And there is a good discussion at the table, I always add, about what has worked to to get the community more involved to make sure that you're best representing their views. And it it made me feel really proud about what we've done here in Lake Bluff, particularly through the pandemic. So kudos to the administration for for all of that. It it really highlighted how lucky we are to represent this community and to work with a wonderful administration team.
I'll just add, I appreciate all of you participating. I know that some of you were not able to and hopefully that'll happen next year. I know that we were well represented. Mr. Khan presented, as he usually does at the triple I conference. And I also was able to present on a panel on superintendent evaluation, which is a nice feather in our cap because we're ahead on on that as well. And the keynote speakers were great and I agree. I went to some sessions on equity. I went to some sessions on communicating better with the community and I just think it was, it was a good weekend. Lots of good ideas. Always, I always take away ideas and things that we could be doing better differently. So again, appreciate your support for this, participating in it. I think it is a great, a great event.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, we're going to move on to the item seven C, the transportation update. Mr. Khan will take us through that.
Just a quick update on transportation. With the weather changing, our buses are getting a little more crowded. Schools are still experiencing bus driver shortage and difficulties with transportation. It's making headlines. It's a topic at almost every business manager's meeting that I attend. And we're continuing to look for ways to keep our buses running. We paid out our first bonuses payment this month. We paid out our first bonuses payment this month, about $6,000. That seems to be having a positive impact on our drivers. We also drafted a waiver to allow one of our bus drivers to handle some childcare issues so she could continue to drive for us. And we're continuing, we're considering more creative ways to solve these issues, possibly going back to sharing buses with Lake Forest High School. This will take some study and lead time because it would involve changing school start times, but we're looking at all possible ways to try to make our buses more efficient and have more available to, to students.
Any questions for Mr. Khan?
Changing school start times by how much?
Twenty minutes or so. Later. The high school starts at seven, drops off at seven forty-five and we most of our routes start at seven thirty, so we would, if we could shift back a little bit, we could possibly have the high school pickup and then the middle, then the same drivers could pick up the middle school and then, I'm sorry, the elementary school and then the middle school. So we could share buses with the high school, which would take the pressure off finding drivers. We could have, because right now we need separate drivers for the high school as for us, so we could have more buses available, it'd be less crowded. It would actually potentially save between a hundred and $200,000 a year because we would be having fewer buses or you'd be paying less for the bus because we're sharing it and sharing those costs. So we understand it would be a big impact for the community and for the teachers. And so there's a lot of analysis that needs to be done to vet it out and then to lay the groundwork and make sure that everybody's on board and that it's.
And that is a contractual issue for our union, so we would need to work with our union on that.
Okay.
So it's not just something we're looking at now. It's very early stages, but that is a potential opportunity to have more buses, fewer drivers and less transportation cost.
And I feel like it might be a, a good time if we had to do any slight changes because things have been so different. I mean, we've been consistent this year, but certainly we had.
Last year, we started at ten o'clock.
Well, right. And that's really my question, right? Slight change is not a big deal. If, if you go back to ten o'clock, people are going to freak out.
So a lot of work to do yet and a lot of people to bring on board, but we're and, and also just to make sure that it's a viable idea. We're just, I just wanted you to be aware of all the things we're doing to try to address the problems that we're facing.
Thank you. And really overall comparatively, our district is doing really well. And I appreciate Jay and his team, Tammy at the district office, our district administrative support staff, our teachers, our principals and assistant principals. There's been a lot of work on transportation in the last two years. And relatively speaking, we're keeping things pretty well managed and that, that is attributed to our team.
I'd like to thank Tammy Robards, who is a genius at transportation and saves my mental health because like before I even get in the door, she's working on it. Had to deal with lots and lots of changes, especially last year and this year, and she does a great job. So.
Yay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Khan? All right, let's move on to our action items. Item A is the certification of the 2021 tax levy. Before we begin tonight, we had our tax hearing and Mr. Khan went into depth, depth about the implications of the, the levy. Basically, what we're looking at is a 1.4% increase on existing properties. Does anybody, before I call for motion, does anybody have any questions, comments or concerns about that? So may I have a motion to approve the certification of the 2021 tax levy as presented by the administration?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Lauren Hirsch.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Yes.
Andy Duran.
Yes.
Ann Hill. Yes. Mark Barry.
Yes. Motion's approved. Item B, eight B, the approval of the legislative priorities for 2021, 2022. This is the approval of the discussion we just had about the priorities presented in the board packet. Any questions, comments or concerns before we vote?
I don't know that we're ready for a vote. I thought we had discussed, maybe, I don't know if we actually do decide that formally, but I think based on the conversation tonight.
We table it.
We table it.
Not table.
Well, table just means we'll, we'll bring it back to the board at another date after it's been reworked. Is that the consensus at the table?
Yes.
That we should table it and not vote on it?
Yes.
All right. So we're going to table item B, legislative priorities. Moving on, approval of the issue to issue a notice of remedial warrant to employee number three oh seven. As previously discussed in closed session, the board is required to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of remedial warning. And I need to read throughout the whole resolution. Okay? Sorry, I didn't, I didn't have that up. I apologize. Okay, this is kind of long, so bear with me. So we're asking to approve the following resolution, a resolution authorizing issuance of a notice of remedial warning. The board, whereas the Board of Education of Lake Bluff School District Number sixty-five, Lake County, Illinois, is empowered to manage the operations of the schools of the, the district, including management of its employees. And whereas Board of Education has the power to discipline and dismiss teachers pursuant to section ten dash twenty point five, ten dash twenty-two point four and twenty-four dash twelve of the school code. Whereas the Board of Education has received and reviewed information and recommendations from the administrative staff regarding the unprofessional conduct of bear with me. Employee number three zero seven seven. A tenured teacher employed by the district, whereas the Board of Education has concluded that the information reports of unprofessional conduct indicates sufficient reason and cause for the teacher's dismissal from employment in this district if deficiencies are not corrected. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lake Bluff School District Number sixty-five, Lake County, Illinois, as follows, that employee number three zero seven seven shall be issued a formal remedial warning for the reasons stated in the notice attached and incorporated in this resolution as exhibit one. That the president and secretary, section two, that the president and secretary of the Board of Education are authorized and directed to send this resolution and notice of remedial warning to the teacher by certified mail. Return receipt requested. Section three, that the superintendent or her designee shall either personally deliver a copy of this resolution and notice of the, to the teacher or send it by electronic mail and shall be subsequently assist and shall subsequently assist and supervise individual remediation effort and monitor her professional conduct. Section four, that this resolution shall be.
Mark, your audio is cutting in and out. Do you have me to finish reading? I'm going to have Ann continue reading, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry. Yeah, please go ahead. And beware that.
All right, I'm going to pick up from section two. That the president and secretary of the Board of Education are authorized and directed to send this resolution and notice of remedial warning to the teach certified mail, return receipt requested. Section three, that the superintendent or her designee shall either personally deliver a copy of the solution and notice to the teacher or send it by electronic mail and shall subsequently assist and supervise the individual's remediation efforts and monitor her professional conduct. Section four, that this resolution shall be in full force and effective immediate option adopted this fourteenth day of December, 2020 by the following vote, which I will call.
Do you need a motion?
Motion to adopt this remedy.
So moved.
Yes.
Amy. Andy Duran.
Yes.
Yes. Mark Barry.
Yes.
Lauren. Carrie Steinbach. Passed.
Okay, motion passed. Can you guys hear me or should we hand this off to Ann to do the rest?
We're still having trouble. Do you have the memo up?
I don't have the memo.
Let us get the memo up, Mark. We're still having trouble with your audio.
Sorry.
Let me get it for you. Ready?
Mm-hmm. All right. As previously discussed, the board is asked to approve the settlement agreement with a former substitute teacher. And since Mark's audio is not working, I will just summarize. Well, this is and Dr. The Alley could add in, this is a suit that was brought on. And our, our insurance company and attorneys have, have strongly suggested that we there's any other context. So may I have a motion to approve the settlement and general release of the Lake Bluff Elementary School Number sixty-five, Northern District Case Number two zero dash zero as presented. Want to call a vote?
Yes.
Andy Duran.
Yes.
Ann Hill. Yes. Mark Barry.
Yes. Can you hear me? Thumbs up?
We got you. Lauren Hirsch.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Okay, motion approves. Mark, do you want me to keep going?
If, if you can't hear me, then you got to do it.
Yeah. Item E is personnel report, personnel report in the file packet. I will read that personnel report, which I do have. I was going to do this part, so let me pull that up. I got it. Got it right here. Okay, so let me read this, the nonlicensed new hire, Reedie, Secretary at the Lake Bluff Elementary School, effective one ten twenty-two. He has a salary of twenty. We have two resignations. Middle school, effective six fourteen twenty-two. And Tim Mooney, a teaching assistant at the middle school, effective December ninth, 2021, for personal reasons. We have one FMLA request, that's Michelle. Requested dates are January eighteenth, starting January eighteen, 2022, for approximately four to six weeks. So may I have a motion to approve the personal report as presented?
So moved. Second. Andy Duran.
Yes.
Ann Hill. Yes. Mark Barry.
Yes.
He says thumbs up. Yes. Lauren Hirsch.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Yes.
And passes. It's the consent agenda. Consent agenda in the, the board packet, session meeting minutes, the closed session meetings from both one. Treasurers report, impressed report, bills report, MP card report. Anything pulled out of the consent agenda for discussion? Great. So may I have a motion for the consent agenda for December fourteenth, 2021, as presented by the administration?
So moved.
Second.
Ann Hill. Yes. Mark Barry.
Yes.
Thumbs up from Mark Barry. Yes. Lauren Hirsch.
Yes.
Carrie Steinbach.
Yes.
Tim Pennett.
Yes.
Amy Connell Donahue.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes. That motion passes. Next item, nine FOIA requests. We received one FOIA request form that is in the packet. Looked like a pretty
This information.
So now that is public comment. Nobody in the room? Are there any public comments? That have been submitted?
No written public comments.
We're having trouble actually with the.
Shelley, you're on mute, it looks like right now.
We have no written public comments.
No written public comment, just in case we can't hear her. Yes.
Okay, then item eleven is adjournment. So may I have a motion to adjourn from two thousand twenty-one certification meeting at eight twenty-nine PM.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.